Solar ordinance for Cato Township. With adjustments. For private. Solar energy systems. The zoning district will include ag residential, rural residential, commercial industrial. The second. Adjustment. Will be for letter C, commercial solar energy systems. Commercial solar energy systems are allowed in commercial zoning and require a special land use permit and a site plan review. Underneath. Commercial, well, point two. Letter B. Commercial solar energy systems must be located on parcels of land. Uh, five. Acres. In size larger.
Where'd you see, where'd you go?
System and location requirements. So I didn't merge all of them.
Two, and that's where I got the fifty feet thing. Oh, here it is.
And. Letter C, commercial energy systems, including all solar panel structures and equipment, must be set back fifty feet from all lotlines. And public road rightaways, hundred feet from residential lotlines township. On sole discretion may allow lesser setbacks approved if approved by neighboring property or accord with the county. Any other discussion?
I think I'm wondering that last one was still.
Ron?
Yeah, did it say the township or township on its own or on a sole discretion? Town, it says township on sole discretion.
If you put the commas in it would clean it up township period or comma on sole discretion comma may allow.
Should I say on its sole discretion? Or do you think?
At their sole discretion.
Yes.
I think that's the way it's working in a lot of the other ones, that's why they were trying to mimic it. It's been worded that way before.
It's not showing. I agree with, was township at their sole discretion.
Yeah.
Commercial set solar energy systems, including all solar panel structures and equipment may, there must be setback fifty feet from all lotlines, public road rightaways. Township at their sole discretion may allow a lesser setback only if approved by neighboring property and record with the county. So that's the motion we have. For the resolution. To adopt. Our solar energy systems zoning ordinance. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. I want to do a roll call vote. Jake? Joe?
Yes.
Quan?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I vote yes to. Resolution. Has been adopted to. Our zoning.
Do you have to sign the number or does the board sign the number?
Oh. I'll get, I'll give this to the board. Oh, yes. I. Yes, so our, our next resolution. Is three point two four and five point oh four.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance as written for section three point two four and for five point zero four.
I have a motion. To adopt the resolution for approval ordinance. Three point two four and five point oh four by Quan. Second by Joe. The proposed amendments for this resolution is revising three point two four regarding barn dominiums and revising section point five oh four. To remove certain setbacks on the lot size requirements. On ag land. Any further discussion? I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, where we added that on section twelve.
What's your notice?
Number twelve, where we added the post frame barn dominiums, what are we having, are changing. When you read that. I think we should put in there, you, everybody know where I'm at?
Yes.
Okay, that we know what it means, Dave knows what it means, but down the road, if Dave's not here, we're not here. Should we put in there that should exempt you from number three and four?
Are you meaning?
Yeah.
Yes.
That, that would, that would clarify for sure.
Right, otherwise it's.
So you say post frame barn dominiums resident, residential to follow the county building code with a sealed print.
Exempt you from.
This. Well, that'd be this. I can't say addition because it wouldn't be an addition.
This should, should exempt you from. Three point two four.
This shall exempt you.
Three and four, I don't.
Yeah, I just not sure what it's worth to say. Exempt from three, that.
Because it's part of the ordinance now.
Can we? Can we add a. A sentence at the very end of point three and four stating.
Oh, that would.
If. If. If post frame barn dominium see.
Well, you could say.
For exemption?
You could just say barn dominium, post frame slash barn dominiums are exempt from this requirement. And then say it again on number four.
And then see.
Then C, C twelve, you're off the end of it, you. See, number twelve.
I agree what you're saying at the end of C twelve. I don't, both ways at night. No, Quan just said it.
Well, you, you could just say, so then post frame barn dominium residential following county building code is sealed print. All post frame barn dominium residential are exempt from requirements referred to in sections three and four.
Great. Say it one more time. Post frame barn dominium residential to follow county vote, county building code with sealed print.
And then you still have that period there, and then you'd say all post frame barn dominium residentials will be exempt from the requirements in sections three and sections four of this ordinance. Before enough to put one of this subcategory under.
Post frame barn dominium residential to follow county building code with sealed print. All post frame barn dominiums are exempt from. Number three, number four.
I would say sections three and four of this ordinance.
Sections number three and four. From.
Of order. Should we say numbers instead of.
You could get, you could say just, you could literally say are exempt from section three point two four. Part A, subpart three and four. And then it's very specific to, then you know you have to say this ordinance is, and you can't, you can't mess it up like this.
You get it, Jenny?
It does clarify it.
I mean, how the, did they always write it with like the parentheses, three point two four parentheses A, parentheses three and four, parentheses. Do you understand, Jenny?
She's lost.
Um, post frame barn dominium residential to follow county building code with sealed print. All post frame barn dominiums are exempt from section three point two four A, three and four.
I don't know whether who reads it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, just want to summarize, I have a motion on the floor for a resolution. Recommended approval of the ordinance to amend zoning ordinance. Three point two four regarding barn dominiums. And to revise section five point oh four to remove certain setbacks and lot size requirements from non-agriculture land. With. An adjustment, um, three point two four. Section A, number twelve, post frame, are, are, post frame barn dominiums residential to follow the county building code with a sealed print. All post frame barn dominiums are exempt from section three point two four A, three and four. Any other discussion? Do a roll call vote. Dave?
Yes.
Quan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Phil, yes. Motion carried. Next on the list, um, for new business, we have a, a, a resolution for ordinance number three point oh four, three point four oh, wind energy turbines.
I'll make a motion that we pass the ordinance as written for section three point four zero for wind.
Discussion.
Just I'll go again. We go to setbacks, which is letter E. Seven. Okay. Third line in, I'll just read, the setback from all roads and other infrastructures shall be four times the tip, the total height. And then we need from, leave from, but we need to take out non participating and. And then leave wetlands, lakes, streams, right away and quit it there because we already have, we already have non participating property lines in the top first line sentence. And public road is in the sentence I just read, read.
So we're just getting redone it?
Yes.
I, I could agree to that for sure.
You say, say again.
Okay, I'll start at the whole paragraph, the minimum setback from non participating property line shall be four times the total height of the L A W T or sixteen forty feet, whichever is greater. The setback from all roads or other infrastructures shall be four times the total height from. And then we're going to take out non participating in the word and.
I was just gonna say from a wetlands, lakes, streams.
Streams and right away, and then we, then add right there, period after the word way. Because we don't need public road because it said all roads above a road here.
Yep.
You see what I mean, Jake?
Any other discussion?
You get that, Jenny?
No, I'm waiting for Phil to say it, not me. I mean, I have a lot of it, I just want to make sure it's right.
Okay, um, hearing none, other, I'm just going to summarize this resolution to recommend the approval of the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance for wind energy turbines for Cato Township. On the floor, I had a res, a, a motion for the resolution by Quan, seconded by Jake. And. With one adjustment. For wind energy turbines, three point four oh, section. Seven, letter E setbacks. The minimum setbacks from all non participating property lines shall be four times the total height of the L W E T or sixteen forty, whichever is greater. The setbacks from all roads and other infrastructure shall be four times the total height from wetlands, lakes, streams, and right away. The township may in its sole discretion allow lesser setbacks only if the owner of the non participating property signs a waiver consent to lesser setbacks and a waiver recorded to counter, counter registered deeds. But in no case shall these setbacks be less than two and a half times the total height of the L W E T. So we have this resolution for the wind energy turbines. Revising, among other things, clarifying the height, the noise, and setbacks for the wind energy. I'll take a roll call vote. Jake?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Quan?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Phil, yes. Motion carried. I believe the next thing. You also Jenny?
Yep.
We have, um, I just want to go over one thing that, um, every year I'm required to give, um, a, um. An update to the, uh, the board. For, um. The planning commission is part of our, um, bylaws. So this is kind of what I went over, I went over our, our goals for twenty twenty-three. Our goals for twenty twenty-three was to, to dig into the master plan, solar ordinance. I also asked the commissioners to look at your pay, um, I also asked the township to, um, or, and asked the commissioners, I asked the board for the commissioners' pay. And I asked them to invest in some technology, um, for, for Cato Township. I, I believe that, um, we've made tremendous strides, uh, strides in all those, as you can see, the master plan has been adopted, we just, um. Made a resolution on the solar ordinance, it did raise your, your, our pay for the commissioners and they've invested in some technology, if you look at the website. If you look at, um, videotaping, I mean, we, we have some things that we've moved tremendously forward when it comes to that for our residents and township, so. We did have six meetings this past year, we had one special meeting in December, and, uh, we had one public hearing for the master plan and also an open house in, uh, uh, the master plan, May of twenty twenty-three. We are fully staffed, we have one new team, uh, one member, new commissioner Jake, who joined our team in, uh, July of this past year. And also Jenny Talon that, um, is our note taker, and then we also, um, had Joe, uh, main for our Z B A. Because we lost, um. Frank Clark. The terms of the commissioners are there, uh, my term ends at the end of this year, uh, Joe, um, ends at, uh, December of, uh, twenty twenty-five. Quan, Jake, uh, December twenty twenty-six, and then Dave, your. Yep, November this coming year. As far as permits, um, we have nine old barns, five home additions, we have three new builds, we have, uh, two post, uh, barn, post frame barn dominiums. Two decks, one attached garage, one swimming pool, so I mean, I, I think we still have some growth out there happening in the, in the township, which is truly awesome to see. Uh, for twenty twenty-four, um, we have five meetings scheduled. Um, just kind of a typo error on your paper there, um, January tenth, March twentieth is our next meeting. Um, July tenth, September eleventh, November thirteenth, we already had.
You got that May and eight?
May.
May thirteenth, I told you it's there.
Uh, May eighth. Sorry. Uh, March twentieth, May eighth, July tenth, September eleventh, November thirteenth, we added this meeting tonight to our public hearing. Um, which we accomplished, uh, our, our resolutions for those ordinances, which I think is just truly awesome. And then, um, we did, the board talked about technology upgrades, the website and video, um, you can go back and watch. That, um. Broadcast and you can see what they talked about when it comes to that, I don't want to get too deep into that, but, um. And then the elections for twenty twenty-four, we had, uh, myself as chair, Joe as vice chair, Jenny as, uh. Our note taker, so. Um, I asked for some feedback from them. They want to know, the board wants to know if any of you want any further training, there are some webinars, there's some. I have open meeting apps, um. Different procedures when it comes to rules from the M S U extension, I don't know if any of you are interested in. This court, you don't have to pay anything, you just have to participate. March. March, August, December, it's kind of a three part thing. Noon to one. I don't know if any of you want to expand your knowledge there. It's up to you, if you are, uh, let me know.
Or wasn't, wasn't she talking about maybe getting, they were talking about maybe you could do the thing with the lower.
Yep, yep, that was another thing I was talking about, um, the Z B A put on a seminar with our attorney this past year, I enjoy your part of that, where you. Where they brought in some other townships, um, and, and to reduce our cost, um, and, uh, there's a great turnout, and I think, um, it was very beneficial. For, um, the Z B As in, in neighboring townships, so we could do some of that also when it comes to the. Planning commissions around too, so I don't know if you're interested in doing something like that.
I'd be, I'd be able to, yeah.
So I'll let her know that and then we'll do something with that for twenty twenty-four also, just to further our education, so do all the right things. It was also asked that, um, for goals for twenty twenty-four when it comes to ordinances. Um, I think you all remember that, uh, one of the things that Danielle said is that we need to, we added a late residential district. And we don't have an ordinance to support that yet, so that's something that we're going to have to look at and, and expand on and obviously adopt just through board for twenty twenty-four, so. I think that's first on the bucket list, um, Randy says also that she's getting, uh, phone calls from township residents. And we don't have any, uh, I think we need to look up the blight ordinance still, the county was working on something, I don't know, Dave, do you know where they're at? Have they kind of pushed back?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, Farland, well, it's.
Nothing?
More on.
Okay.
And Dave, and Dave keeps trying to.
He doesn't do anything with them.
So, um. I'm not sure what we have to do with blight, but we, maybe we'll do something with that, but we're getting calls also on tiny houses, you're hearing more and more about that in the public. Um, we don't have an ordinance when it comes to that, and also shipping containers. That's out there, we have nothing out there for that. Um, still getting calls on heights of old barns, I know we adjusted ours this past year, I think it's at eighteen feet if I remember right. But now there's questions out there to raise that to maybe twenty twenty-two, twenty-four feet. I think we had one question of maybe as high as twenty-eight. So, I don't know. Um, temporary use permits, um, we don't have any ordinance out there when it comes to if somebody builds a house or remodels a house or, um, we don't have anything out there that says, um, you can move in maybe a. Yeah, to live in while you're, you're, you're building, um, and we've been asked to kind of look at that. Um, we don't have anything when it comes to private drives. And then the other thing I think we need to look at is honeymoon heights, we've been asked, um, to make sure that we line up things when it comes to that in our, because they have kind of their own zoning out there too. If I understand, I, I've not actually seen it, I need to look that up, so, um, I believe that's what, um, they asked. Oh, and then also register with the M P A, I don't know if, if, any of you are registered with the M P A, but they have lots of materials, books. Um, that is really at no cost to you or at a discounted rate. If I have that right. So, um, if you, if you want to be signed up for that, um, all we have to do is let Randy know and she can take care of that for us, is what she said, so.
I think it'd be beneficial if everybody wants, if they use it, because there's a lot of information there.
Well, and you can call over there and ask them a question, instead of asking the lawyer, if you guys got questions before you call over there and ask that way, it should be your kind of, uh, way you like to do.
So that concludes new business, um, I'll open up, uh, public comments.
Am I considered public?
You talk a lot.
We'll let doggo.
Don't sweet pine township, thanks for all the work you guys did on all these ordinances, um, I really appreciate it. Also, I don't know if this helps, but Pine has been struggling with the blight thing as well, and basically what, what we've learned at our board meetings is that initially the county commissioners. Were working on a blight ordinance so that the language would be universal, basically what they found out was that's illegal. It's not enforceable by law to trump township ordinances. Um, so it would go nowhere anyway, so once they stopped pursuing a common language ordinance. Sheriff Williams pretty much took his hands off and said, well, I'm not going to enforce the township ordinances at all because none of them say the same thing. Um, and it's too confusing. Um. Personally, it's frustrating to me because the definition of an ordinance is it's enforceable by law. When, when it's an ordinance, it's a law, and that's what our law enforcement officers are supposed to do, is enforce the law. So, um. One of the things we talked about at Pine is making sure that our ordinance is easily accessible for law enforcement officers on our website. So that they can easily pull it up and say, yes, you are in violation. Um. But also they are responsible when you enforce blight to actually accompany you if you need them. Um, so anyway, that's, that's where we're at. I don't know if you can get local police to help you enforce it, um, but Mike's not going to do it.
Just kind of touch on the blight, uh, I don't want to ruffle anybody's feathers, but I'm a little against. Enforcing blight so harshly on residents, but yet some people are exempt from it. It, it, one of the big things for me is, is, you know, we're, we're enforcing as a township, we're enforcing abandoned cars. Well, there's a lot of abandoned cars out in the country neighborhood, and certain people are exempt from that, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's fair to everybody in the, in the whole township. You know, we're, we're going after, like, Dave said something about he, he's going to get a warrant. Try to go after something for this one person and. Try to go after something for this one person and. How, how does that, how is that fair to the other people? You know, I live right across the road from somebody that has all kinds of stuff, I get, you know, if you're using the equipment and this and that, so. I'm not necessarily for, let's go tear these people's head off because they got blight. You know, I, I can live with it around the neighborhood, may, maybe we could try to do something of helping these out or community cleanup, some, something, because. You know, I have to live with blight across the road, but I can't get it enforced at all, so.
Who else? Jenny?
There's one thing to have blight around and there's another completely have blight around and completely have a trash yard and completely have a disaster, I'll mess. And if you want to complain about your blight, file a blight, a blight complaint. And if I want to complain about somebody's blight that I have to look at, I'll complain. It's not about who's who, it's about who complains. I mean, if you don't complain, nobody's going to know, period, that's, and I learned that when I was in Belvidere Township, when I lived on a street that was full of it. And they, when we went to the township board meeting, said, well, we don't do anything unless somebody complains, period. That's all it was, it was just a matter of who's going to squeak the loudest. So, and I know that Dave Kelsey has blight complaints sitting in his computer from over two years ago that are still a complete disaster and nothing has happened to him. So, and I have not heard since October, when I've been coming to all these meetings. And all the meetings have been in Cato Township, I've not heard him speak of them, of that once, and it's still a problem. It's never been handled and it's never been taken care of, so there's that. And that's how I feel about that, but another thing I'd like to, to think about in the zoning, and this is maybe something that you probably going to know about, or I don't even know if there is anything like it. But what's the zoning for outbuildings around the lake?
You, you're talking just a building, no residence?
I'm talking like an accessory building?
An accessory building at the lake, is it, as, as of right now gets allowed on the lakefront. And that shouldn't be.
Are you talking like storage? You're talking like a little storage barn or are you talking like a big pole barn?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking like a little storage shed, like a ten by twelve story shed.
There's, there's a, there's a larger setback for waterfront, I know that.
Apparently this is perfectly fine and it's in clear vision of, nobody can look that way on the lake because that shed sits right there.
How big is it?
Like a storage shed, like a ten by twelve or ten by ten.
That's, we have no ordinance for that.
Right, we don't, and there's nothing that says that guy can't sneak up there. So, that's another thing that would be interesting because there's a lot of, at a lake, the front yard is your lake lot, not your roadside.
Depends on the lake. My lots are all on the lakeside, none is roadside.
Well, yeah, but you're not on the lake, I mean, if you're on.